Good evening. Let's call to order the Planning Commission meeting of November 10th at 7:00 PM. The city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sunnyvale prides itself on the rich diversity of our residents and we are committed to creating a culture of belonging, where members of our diverse community feel included, safe, and respected. This Planning Commission meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the commission for consent calendar or public hearing items. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the commission's authority, generally referred to as within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. The speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the Planning Commission agenda. Use the Show Captions button to view captions on Zoom. Comments on matters not on the agenda must be submitted prior to the time I call the item for oral communications. Comments on the agenda item must be submitted prior to the time I close the public hearing on the agenda item. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to the time period set for public comments for the agenda item, which will be strictly enforced. Guidelines are posted on the city's website and on the Planning Commission agenda. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in nation, in the God, in the people, in liberty and justice for all.
Recording officer, may we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Davis.
President.
Vice Chair Shukla.
Present.
Commissioner Saroni.
Present.
Chair Iglesias.
Present.
Commissioner Pine.
Present.
We have five commissioners present and the absences of Commissioners Fagoni and Sagura are excused.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to oral communications. This is the public's opportunity to address the commission on topics not listed on tonight's agenda. This section is limited to 15 minutes and may be extended or continued after the public hearing's general business section of the meeting. Individuals may only speak once during oral communications. This Planning Commission meeting is a limited public forum and the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the commission's authority, which is known as the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are outside the commission's subject matter jurisdiction, the presiding officer will rule the speaker as out of order. This allows the commission to conduct its business in a reasonably efficient manner and protects the rights of other speakers. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer, raise your digital hand now, or dial *9 on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak. Given that there is nobody here, we will move to remote speakers. Because of the nature of remote communication, speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Therefore, speakers are warned to limit their comments to subjects that fall within the commission's authority to take action. Recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on oral communications?
We do, Chair.
All right, thank you. I will go ahead and close oral communications. This brings us to consent calendar. We have three consent calendar items tonight. I will go ahead and open public comment on consent calendar items. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer, raise your digital hand now, or dial *9 on the telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak. Recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
We do, Chair.
All right, I will go ahead and close public comment, and I will ask for a motion or discussion from my colleagues. Commissioner Pine.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent calendar as submitted.
Thank you. Vice Chair Shukla.
Seconded.
Thank you. Recording officer, please conduct a vote.
The motion passes with five yeses and Commissioners Sagura and Fagoni absent.
Thank you very much. And so what is the next step for the item C of the consent calendar?
Item C is the continuance, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it'll be going on November 24th for Planning Commission.
Thank you. This brings us to general business. For tonight, we only have one general business item. And that is item 25-1068, a discussion and possible recommendation of one council priority project idea to the city council. Is there a staff report?
No staff report. I'll just keep it brief. As you know, and the city manager also emailed the commissioners too, but the council has changed their priority setting process to where the boards and commissions are only can only propose one item for the whole board or commission, and that'll go to the council for consideration. And the council may only propose three items every year. And so that's to help staff be able to kind of work on these projects that come forward a little bit more efficiently and not having an ongoing list that keeps growing every year. So hopefully this kind of helps keep things on track a little bit better. So tonight, the commission can discuss a possible item for consideration for the council to consider. And it would end up being one of their three items that would have to go forward for the council to take for consideration. So you can discuss tonight. We can also discuss more on the 24th also. We just need to get what the topic would be to the city manager by December.
All right. Thank you very much. At this point, I'll open it up for Commissioners to ask questions. Commissioner Pine.
Thank you. It was my understa-- as a clarifying question, it was my understanding that it was three per council member and not three total?
You're correct, Commissioner Pine. I'm sorry about that.
Yep, thank you.
Vice Chair Shukla.
Thank you, Chair. So do we discuss right now about like what are the like we have some study issues like which are given? We discuss right now or?
Yes, you can discuss them right now amongst yourselves. And if there's items that you want to vote on, it's a majority vote would be the item that would go forward to the council. If you guys want to discuss some now and then just put a decision off to the 24th, and then decide to make a motion at that point, you can do that too.
Okay, so I think I am just going back to like the history and we had been discussed about a few of the issues I remember and it is like one of them was the just a second, it's it's about the for single-family homes, parking requirements for single-family homes. That was the study we were discussing one time. Then there was another one was about parking fees, like park a park dedicated fees for the housing elements. But that's probably, I mean, because we, they thought that maybe we should discuss and maybe ease some of those fees. But I think there will be other committees will be interested in it and they can continue on that instead of we going for that. And the third one was I had, I think I just like that I would think that it will be much more efficient for us to discuss that. And that one was about zoning change. Let me, I'll get back to it because I read it and I will tell you properly, but it is like it will be very good. So if somebody wants to say something, give me a minute. Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Shukla. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. The one idea I have is that we it's not my idea. It's actually coming from Tim. We we have a bit of a gap in our commissions in that we have a, we have B-PAC, bicycle and pedestrian advisory. But we actually have no commission that is looking at automobiles or transportation in general. And my observation over the years has been that we make we make changes. The city makes changes to the roads that make it perhaps more convenient to drive all the time at the expense of bicycle and pedestrian safety. And there's it doesn't come before any commissions. It generally doesn't come before city council either unless it's some for example, a lane, a right turn lane appeared at Wolf in El Camino. Just appeared one day. And like, oh, how did that happen? So the idea, that's just the background. The idea would be to either change B-PAC to a transportation commission. That would be overall, whose remit would be, actually, that's the idea. Would change B-PAC to a transportation commission that would consider all forms of transportation within the city and advise upon that, including automobiles and bicycles and pedestrians. Everything accessibility, the whole works. I don't think we should look at especially our roads, including the sidewalks and the walkways with them and so on, as separate units from each other. Right? So that's, that's my idea. It's not mine. That's the one I'm bringing forth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Now we have Commissioner Saroni.
Thank you, Chair. So I do have a specific proposed council priority project. Can we, which I sent out earlier today. Can we okay, great. Thanks. Good. Thanks. That's better. So this is a well, we used to say steady issue. Now it's a council priority project that Commissioner Fagoni and myself have been working on. And unfortunately, he cannot be here tonight. He'd do a better job of explaining this. But it's basically to look at ways to improve accessibility. And I think you have the second page there right now. Great, great. Okay. So so this is the term commonly used in the industry, universal design housing. And it's basically housing that's designed to accommodate a larger group of of residents, particularly with mobility issues. And something like 12% of US adults have mobility limitations. And this increases with age. Sunny, Santa Clara County is expected to significantly you know, the median age to increase over the next few years. One in four residents in 2030 will be over 60. And, and at least the, most of the requirements called out here are, are not things that have a significant impact, the cost or difficulty building these. So a lot of times these have just been, been neglected. And I also want to point out that, you know, we think people with mobility issues, people without. But many of us go through a period of being mobility limited because of injuries or surgery or things like that. So which, you know, it may be like a six-month convalescence. So that's the thrust of this and commissioners can look at it in more detail. We did a presentation to the Sunnyvale Advisory Committee on Accessibility. And they expressed positive feedback about this and also gave us some valuable feedback and which is incorporated into this. So, and you can see the community benefits, helps lifelong residents remain in Sunnyvale, strengthens Sunnyvale's identity as a community, encourages multi-generational living, family stability, and of course, supports disabled residents and workers. And potentially this gives developers a market advantage. If you can say that this development, you know, is built to accommodate people with mobility issues, that's, that's a plus. And we actually started out looking at stair lifts as a way to expand the accessibility of these units. And something I wasn't initially aware of, ADA requirements just require the first level to be accessible. After that, you know, if you want to get to the rest of your house. And we're seeing these townhouses, multi-story townhouses, going up all over the place. And you know, if you can't, you just, if you have mobility issues, you can't necessarily get to the rest of the house. Obviously problematic. So this document defines the study scope and it's really pretty straightforward. And a number of cities have already done this. So anyway, that's a suggested. So I mean, in terms of process, I remember the consultant said, well, we weren't supposed to rank them. We're supposed to rank them. But if we're going to come up with one, how do we do that without ranking? We obviously have to rank them. So anyway, hopefully we'll get to that and at the, you know, on the 24th possibly. If I can just comment on Commissioner Davis's suggestion about transportation, which is an excellent one. I believe Palo Alto has a planning and transportation commission as opposed to just a, a planning commission. And definitely, you know, in the Planning Commission here, we're doing all kinds of trade-offs between various things and balance them. B-PAC by its nature is advocating for bicycles and doesn't really do a trade-off of bicycles versus cars versus pedestrians. So I agree with the suggestion that that's a kind of a gap in the way we approach things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Saroni. Next we have Commissioner Vice Chair Shukla.
Thank you.
Oh, I want to appreciate, like I really appreciate my fellow commissioners' suggestions. I'm agreeing with a lot of things and I do believe that that is a building, a lot of requirements for ADA are done by building codes, which are listed there. So, but I'm sure there are, a lot of them are not fulfilled because they are not included into the state or national level. And Sunnyvale can go further for that. I, what I want to talk about is that what we, we deal with land use. That's what our job is, that the zoning is changed and we have some power over land use. And that's what our expertise are. So I think that there was a issue if we have a lot of lower density residential residential and they all want to have ADU and we want to increase housing that way. And there is an objective design standards, but we should, I think we should study that further to to make easier for people to add ADU, like compare requirements of open space. So there is objective design standards, but if we can study and make it easier, come up with some framework, because that's where we can affect to add some extra housing. Because a lot of people just don't know, they have the, they have space, but they just don't know how to do it. Or like what are the very detailed requirements that, okay, you can build it in the front? How much is the setback? Or like, okay, you can only have open space, certain percentage or hardscape? All these requirements, which we have it in objective design standards and maybe we should study that further and help it ease that. So that's what I think, because we can make large difference with that. So that's what my suggestion is. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Shukla. Next we have Commissioner Pine.
Thank you. A couple of questions for staff regarding a couple of things that have been mentioned because I'm hoping to be able to essentially cross them off the list. There was a mention of single-family home parking requirements. Is that something that is being studied in CDD 19-07?
Yeah, we will be looking at the residential parking requirements.
And that does include single-family, right?
Yes.
Okay. And park dedication fees, that's also coming back to us June 8th of next year.
Hopefully that soon, yes. We will be looking at that.
Well, I'm going off the work plan. We just
This is true.
Okay, so I would just suggest to my commissioners that those are both very important things, but they're not but we shouldn't be proposing that to council because they're already being worked on. The other thing I would suggest, just as a process issue, is that we can do straw polls and things to kind of get senses of where people are in terms of thinking about things if we're making formal, a formal motion. I would suggest, my fellow commissioners, that that's probably a good idea is to avoid getting in, to avoid playing games with the amendment, with motions in the amendment tree and stuff that people that don't stare, read too many parliamentary manuals don't like to think about too often.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. And Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I love the accessibility idea, finding ways to encourage developers to build universally. I remember universal was part of the, I don't remember the exact phrasing. And I also, I, off the top of my head, I like Palo Alto's Planning and Transportation Commission. I've, because of various kids' lessons and so on, I found myself with an hour or two to kill on Palo Alto and going running and and whatnot. And they've made lots of improvements that, that balance that balance the different modes of transportation against each other. I think, I think honestly, I really don't like how Palo Alto is run, but they've done a better job on that than we have. And I hate driving through Palo Alto, which probably makes it nicer for the people who actually live there. Right? So I do think that's a great idea. It is a little bit beyond our area of expertise, I guess. I think if each council member gets three that they can put forward, like we have other areas. It's not like they're hard to reach, right? So there are other areas, other ways to maybe get that idea in front. But I really like the, the universal access building. Yeah, I guess if, when we get to a straw poll, that's where I'll be putting, raising my hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Seeing no other commissioner hands. My point of view is that I would agree with Vice Chair regarding that while the vehicle or the transportation commission is a gap, I'm also of the opinion that if we were only given one thing, I will personally want to support something that's more within our remit. I think the concept of universal design is phenomenal because I think we've all sat here, we've all heard from different developers who were building a three-story townhome. And, and when asked about ADA, they say, yeah, there's a, there's a bathroom and a bedroom on the first floor, and that's where that, that's where you get to live. And to me, it's, it's very inauthentic. And so I think it's a good opportunity for us to be really thoughtful. And it nests really well with Sunnyvale's vision of being a community where people can age in place. So I think that that's consistent with our values. So I'm excited about that. I'm planning on opening this up for the, for the public here, for public hearing as well. But before I do that, I will go ahead and Commissioner Davis, did you have your hand just? Oh, okay, good. Commissioner Pine.
Yeah, I would just suggest that I'm hearing a lot of enthusiasm for the universal design standards. And I was going to hold off on adding on to that until after the public hearing. But I'm also just going to throw out my fellow commissioners that I'm hearing enough enthusiasm about that we might not actually need to do straw polls and stuff and like, we could always just, you know, move it tonight if everyone seems enthusiastic about it. But again, if many members of the public have a strong disagreement about that, which I find somewhat unlikely given that there is, given that there is one member of the public in virtual attendance and they are married to the commissioner supporting, support who proposed the proposal. But if there is, you know, great objection to that, I'd consider it. Thank you.
That does not discount their voice. So at which point, we will go ahead So at which point, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this specific item. Please raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. And you'll have three minutes to speak. Remote speakers are warned to limit their comments to the agenda item being considered. And speakers are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak. Recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
We do not, Chair.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and close public hearing. And I don't know if procedurally we need to have a motion to for this. We do? I'm looking for.
I would say yes, because it's part of the public hearing.
Okay. All right, well, then I'll ask for a motion discussion from my colleagues. And I'm inclined to agree with you, your observation. All right, Commissioner Davis.
I move that we, I guess, pass to the city council for consideration, the universal access suggestion, as Commissioner Serni explained.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Pine.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Commissioner Davis, to your motion.
Yeah, I really like it. Let's vote for it. Thank you.
Commissioner Pine, to your second.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent idea. I think it would make this, I first of all, just on a process perspective, I think that's absolutely the kind of thing we should be using this process for. I don't think it's something that the city council would have necessarily come up with on their own. And I think it's, and I think it's something we, I think we should be recommending. I think that's like stuff with like the transportation commission has merit, I think. But I, there are a bunch of different ways you could accomplish that. And I think ultimately it is somewhat out of our scope. And and while I also think ADUs, and I'm always here for encouraging ADUs, that that area gets so regulated by state law. I worry that I don't know that it's something we should be spending a lot of staff time on, just because I feel like staff already ends up spending time having to, every year, having to look at the latest state law ADU changes and tweak and tweak us into compliance with how it got changed the previous year. But no, this is, this is a great idea. I thank you to Commissioners Serni and Fagoni for for proposing it. I don't think we need to spend any, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it, honestly. It's a good idea. We should recommend it to council.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine and Vice Chair Shukla.
Okay, okay, so I'm kind of leaning, you convinced me because I do agree that city has, our city has all the sheets ready for ADUs. There are objective standards, but I think they are very complex, even the state has it. So I really would love to have some notes, actually, it's a it doesn't need even study, she requires some way that residents can be informed that how they can utilize their land. But it's okay. I mean, you need money to also spend to make, build the ADU. So it's maybe there are some constraints, even though we do all these things. So I think I'm willing to withdraw that and lean towards accessible design. That's a great idea. So I will be voting for it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Shukla. All right, seeing no other commissioner hands, the only thing I wanted to just emphasize is I also see tremendous value in simplifying the process and revisiting ADU. That is, that's not dismiss that at all. I'm a huge fan of that. I just think that what Commissioner Fagoni and Serni came up with, it's in our remit, it's insightful. We have experience, I think probably unique experience of seeing the challenges of it being unaddressed. And so I think that it's extremely thoughtful and insightful recommendation. I'm very excited to support this. With that, recording officer, please connect a vote.
The motion passes with five yeses and Commissioners Fagoni and Segura absent.
Thank you very much. And planning officer, what's next for this item?
This item will get forwarded to the city manager for to take a look at, and then it'll end up with the city council in February.
All right, thank you. This brings us to non-agenda items and comments. First up, we have commissioner comments. And seeing no commissioner hands, are there staff comments?
Just a couple. On November eighteenth, we'll have a city council study session, which will be with the city council and boards and commissions, chairs and vice chairs to talk about the overall effectiveness of the commission meetings. And also on the eighteenth of November for the public hearing, they'll be, the council will be considering amendments to the council policy manual for chapter seven for planning and management. And then on December, or sorry, February twenty-sixth, the city council will have their first council priority projects workshop.
Great, thanks so much. At this time, I'm happy to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty P.M. Want to thank everyone for attendance and a special call out to Sue Serni, thank you for that virtual support. And see you in a couple of weeks.